Okay, I'd like to say welcome to this special session at the Royal Economic Society Conference, being hosted by the Royal Economic Society Education and Training Committee. And I'm Professor Denise Hawkes, currently at Anglia Ruskin University, and I'm the first Chair of the Education and Training Committee, which has now entered its third year of existence. So just as a way of starting the conference, I'm going to talk a little bit about the committee and how we've got to today. But also to give you a sense of how exciting it is to have been the first Chair and all the amazing things that we've managed to achieve, together with a lot of people actually who take part in the committee. So in our first year of existence, we essentially had to work out who we were and what we were doing. And the committee sort of evolved around two main products, which were to work out our structure and to do a grants review to work out how we were supporting our RES members in terms of their careers and the things that they could achieve. And it's been a real pleasure then to be sort of have Denise Osborne to really help and Rachel Griffiths at that time to really help guide how we would be. And the committee sort of evolved around four or five subgroups. The first of those subgroups has been just really launched around undergraduate and postgraduate economics, taught economics, and that's chaired by the Deputy Chair for the Education Training Committee, Steve Proud, who's our discussant today from Bristol University. The second body of work for the committee is around postgraduate research students and ECRs, and led by Professor Kevin Lee at Nottingham, and really using the resources that the RES has had for a very long time around the education, around Easter school, around job market and various support for our PGR and ECRs, early careers academics. The third committee chaired by Paravam Chowdhury at UCL really focuses on things that we can do to support all economists in the role, predominantly academic economists, although some of these activities do stretch towards the professional economists. So things like the RES Presents, the CPD sessions like Communicating Economics that we hosted, and some of those were embedded in the conference last year, and an increasing connection to CTAO's annual conference in June. For anyone who's more interested in more of the pedagogy side, they may be interested to have a look at that and see that in the various communications from RES at the moment. And then two subcommittees that I personally chair, one that we've just again formed with colleagues from the Government Economic Service, focused on professional economists. So Maureen Paul of Ofgem, Neil Gilborn of Biz and Alex Wilks of Justice have now joined the committee to try to help us communicate and work out how we can work together and to support our wider body of members in the RES. And finally, the Grants Committee, which is a subcommittee that I also chair, really works now building on that grants review to dish out the money essentially. And we make use of the ENT volunteers, and if you're interested in volunteering, you'll see that message in the newsletter, the ENT volunteers to help us peer review those bids as they come in three times a year. And all of that wouldn't have been possible in that first year, I have to say her name, without Mary Louisa Domendes. I say it everywhere that I go. Mary Louisa is the Members' Operation Director at RES and really was fundamental in helping me as an academic with all my wonderful ideas, make sure that it became a reality and something more solid. So building on from the first year of our committee, and last year we spent a lot more time really trying to build our connections with others. And those connections have been wide and various, including with the Society for Professional Economists, particularly around our Knowledge Exchange Grant that we launched last academic year, around working to promote the engagement with the QAA subject benchmarks in economics and the work with the SRC that Kevin Lee's led around the doctorate and how economics contributes to doctorate and social science. But the most important connection, and the reason to leave that last, has been the growing connection between the committee and Econ Network. Econ Network has existed in the space of pedagogy for a lot longer than we have, but equally important that we work together to produce outputs that can speak and to engage not just with those interested in pedagogy, but those who just have a love of economics and want to share it with others. And it's been a real pleasure to work with Alvin and the team on developing this systematic literature review that we'll present today. And I would really like to say that it does not a small amount of effort to undertake one such task as a systematic literature review. And it's taken a large team, but I'm sure Alvin will acknowledge as he does his thing, as the presentation goes on, it's taken a large team and a lot of effort. And we'd really love to hear not just your feedback and your comments, but to what extent this is a useful thing for us to have done, because we would be willing to do this again. Maybe not next year, but maybe in two years' time. And it would be interesting to know whether at the end of the presentation, whether that's interesting, whether that's something that's been found useful. So before I hand over to Alvin, let me just make a couple of announcements around sort of protocol. I'm sure that on day three of the conference, most of us know, but if you want to communicate to us, please use the Q and A function on the right-hand side of the screen. It's also the case that I'm really keen to hear your feedback. So if you've not engaged with the feedback button before, we'd love to hear from you at the end of the session. And now, as we proceed, I'll hand over to Alvin and the team, and then to the discussant before we come back for 20 minutes of Q and A at the end. So thank you, and we hope that you enjoy this session as much as you've enjoyed putting it together. Over to you, Alvin.
Great. Many, many thanks, Denise. And likewise, we've really enjoyed working with the RES Education Training and Education Committee as well. I'm just going to share my screen and hopefully this will work. Okay, can I just check with a nod that that is working? Yep, okay, good. So as Denise said, we had a, we had a big team here, well, six of us working on this systematic review. And I'm going to say a little bit first of all about its motivations. And then I'm going to say a few introductory words and an outline and pass to Steve Cook and also Caroline, who are going to present this review with me. So Steve Cook and Caroline are named there from the University of Warwick. Ashley Late, who works in the Economics Network, was also involved in this. Hopefully she's around somewhere today. Tesfa Mahari from the University of Greenwich and Max Wood, who's a research assistant and was a student at Bristol. So just to say a little bit about the motivation for this first of all, I do want to emphasise this word selective, because this is a selective review. I guess all literature reviews are selective, but we weren't attempting the usual kind of comprehensive review in the standard sense that is often done. And it's partly because of what we do as the Economics Network. And we have, we, one of the main things we do as a network is we train economists and we train primarily early careers lecturers. Every year we have a cohort of lecturers and graduate teaching assistants that go through our programmes. And the network consists of a large network of individuals who are interested in the scholarship of training and learning, and they are interested in sharing their knowledge and therefore training young lecturers and improving practice. And we have, I think we have almost all of the UK's National Teaching Fellows involved in our executive or our associate groups. And we make use of the literature in pedagogy and education in order to deliver this teaching. And in selecting the papers and articles and literature that we find useful, we are most interested in things, papers and that have generalisable and abstractable lessons that can be made practical and that we can talk to the people, our delegates who come to our training about. So it's, you know, it's, we're less interested in those sorts of papers which may be very particular. They're kind of very particular, set in a particular course, but aren't generalisable. They may even have very interesting or clever identification strategies and so on. But as I say, we're really interested in the impactful research in terms of practice. And so what we've done here is to try and create a survey, which is the kinds of things that we find, given the experience we have in the network, are the most useful kinds of papers that we would use in our handbook and our training and in our resources as well. And we hope that others will find that useful. And in going through this, we're also hoping that there may be people working in academic departments, in economics departments around the country, who want to get involved in scholarly work or need to get involved in scholarly work because of the types of contracts that they have. So we're hoping this is, provides a useful, impactful introduction to the literature. We have, I said it's selective, we have limited ourselves to two calendar years, 2020 and 2021, partly with a view to perhaps repeating this in two years' time and taking another two years, which would be 22 and 23. And we've done that partly because it was roughly at the end of 2020, 2021 that we started work on this. And so we didn't want to kind of have an odd period. So it's kind of clear calendar year, two clear calendar years. We were looking at trends in the literature over that period. We didn't, we don't want saying much about what happened before that. We really want to focus on those two years. And a little bit about the kinds of methodologies that people are using, a little bit about interesting areas to pursue. So that's, that's what we're going to be doing. So as I said, publishing timeframe 2021, calendar years. We were only really looking at journal articles. There's a lot of literature. Education is a very broad field. And of course, the literature on education and economics is a subfield of a much, much broader and much bigger literature, specialist literature on education, which has its own journals. And so we needed to find a way of making this, making this doable really and sort of limiting our scope. So we were looking, as I said, for practical and generalisable insights for economics teaching, papers that had sound methodology and that we would perhaps use in our teaching and would be impactful in our teaching. Having identified those papers, we filtered the articles and we looked at titles, abstracts, we looked at their content, and we prioritised as a team. And we also looked at the, we did pay attention to the number of citations, but we also used social media shares. And I'll just say a little bit about that in a moment. But first of all, these are the journals we looked at primarily. This was our way in, although we did stay fairly close to this set of journals. And the three at the bottom there are the, what you might call the the primary current journals in economics-related education. The first two have been around for some time and are well-established. The Journal of Economics Teaching is quite different to those first two. The International Review of Economics Education is related to the Economics Network. It was, it used to be published by us. Now it's published by Elsevier. And the Journal of Economics Education is based in the US and is associated with CTR, which is the Committee for Teaching Research and Economics Education as part of the American Economic Association. Journal of Economics Teaching is a newer thing, which is much more practically based. And as a result, we didn't use as much of the papers from there, but we did use some of them. The other, the other journals here are some of the most important and most well-known journals in the educational literature more broadly taken. So I said, I'd say a little bit about the social media aspect here. This is a quote from a survey, which I'll mention again in just a moment. You know, I said, we're using a selective methodology, which is, which has got a specific purpose and is, and is embedded in the work that we do as a network. But this was a paper, a survey by Fernandez in 2021. And they use machine learning. It was, you know, it was an attempt to be much more comprehensive than we are being here. But they make this interesting point, which is that scholarly papers that are practice-based, so such as those that present different methods to, if I'm just looking at the bold text here, to present demand and supply analysis, receive significantly fewer citations in the literature. And then going down to the second bit of bold, that is, these articles are primarily consumptive in nature. In other words, people use them, they're quite impactful. We use them in our training, for example, but they don't get cited as much. But that doesn't mean that they're not impactful. So we wanted to, we wanted to capture some of this, and that's why we paid quite a lot of attention to the social media aspect here. So very quickly then, just to go through, sorry, just, just first of all, just one observation before I outline the areas that we're going to focus on. An initial observation is, we, I've talked about a few journals there that we concentrated on as our way into this literature. And by the way, this survey, something like this, we've been wanting to do for years, actually. We've just never got it off the ground. So I'm really pleased that, you know, in conjunction with Denise's prompting, we've actually managed to finally, finally do this survey. There is an increasing amount of work in education or pedagogy related, which is being published in what you might call mainstream journals, kind of beyond the education and pedagogy journals. So these are just three papers. They all happen to be touching on the issue of gender. But, and I'm not going to say anything about these at the moment, but just to note how nice it is to see pedagogy coming into some of the more mainstream journals. Steve Cook will talk a little bit about, I think, at least two of these papers in a moment. So I'm just going to give you a quick outline then of what we are going to talk to you about. We're first of all going to talk a little bit about methodology, because, you know, again, with a view to the kind of readership we might have or people who might be interested in a survey of this type. They may be interested not just in what's being written and what's useful, but also how it's being written. And because, you know, obviously economists are trained with economist techniques of data analysis, but the education literature often uses a broader set of techniques than we typically would use in economics research. So something about methodology, how are scholars investigating pedagogy? What are the trends in these methodological approaches? We're going to say a little bit about inclusion. It's a very, very big area. It's quite obvious that there's, you know, when you look at the literature, how much of it is about inclusivity. But what's striking is that so much of it is actually about gender and not other forms of inclusivity at the moment. And then we're going to say a little bit about classroom practice. So some of these kind of the modalities of teaching and some, some kind of techniques of teaching that are being talked about a lot and are having impact and the kinds of things we would use in our training, as I mentioned. And also the trend in the literature that we perceived, moving away from sort of classroom practice and classroom good practice and ideas for classroom use towards the design of modules. And perhaps we might see emerging from that a movement towards the programme design as well, a concern with the design of programmes. And then we're going to say a little bit about this, the title of this, I think the title of this session said something about Covid. And of course, that's unavoidable. And however, just quickly to make the point that 2021, the years 2020 and 2021, were probably too early really, the pandemic was happening. So it's probably too early, given publication lags, to see a lot of papers that were motivated explicitly by Covid and responded to it. There were some, but what we did in this section was we brought together a number of papers that one way or other may tell us something about the way assessment and teaching have changed or might change during the pandemic. I'll say a bit more about that later on. And then we'll summarise by just making a note about wellbeing. I think at this stage, oh, sorry, finally from me for the moment. Just going back to that survey that I mentioned by Fernandez, that mentioned the social citation statistics. They also, in their machine learning identification of keywords and topics, they came up with their own top five subjects of what people have been talking about in recent years. These overlap with ours. They're not quite the same, because obviously their methodology was very different in terms of selection than ours was. But that's just something we found interesting. I'm going to pass over, I think, to Steve.
Okay, thank you, Alvin. If I think about methodological issues or methods of analysis that are employed in pedagogic or educational research, there are a few things to mention. There's more general issues and then there's more specific things that can be picked up upon by focusing on the papers referred to on this slide. In terms of general issues, I think something to mention at the outset is that obviously there's an increasingly large amount of data that's available to undertake educational research. We can get information on student performance. We can get information on how students access online materials, when they use them, how long they use them for, and so on. So we can undertake the kind of econometric analyses that we're perhaps more familiar with, obviously in economics. There's also a lot of experimental analysis that goes on within educational research. But there's also beyond that, a lot of survey-based analyses that are undertaken. So there's a mixture of quantitative, qualitative methods, mixed methods research and so on within the literature. Further to that, another feature within education is not just that there's a variety of methods that are used, but there's also quite explicit discussion and comment upon the types of methods that are employed. So we can think about fairly recently, there was a British Educational Research Association blog, which reviewed how different methods tended to vary across different countries. And there was a comparison drawn between the UK and the Netherlands. And it looked at, there's tended to be an increasing or a larger amount of qualitative research within the UK compared to Dutch authors who tended to go for quantitative methods. And the kind of punchline to that work was that obviously there's a place for both of these within educational research. Beyond that, there's discussions in the literature, such as a recent editorial report within studies in higher education, which emphasises the use of mixed methods. So it's open to all types of analysis. So in general, there's a consideration of all types of approach to provide evidence and support pedagogic research. Considering the slide in front of us here, there's three particular studies that are mentioned here. I think in general, when you look at the papers presented in the International Review of Economics Education, there tends to be quite a substantive or heavy econometric basis to the work presented. And you perhaps might not find that so much within other journals. Although even so, within these different journals, there are examples of econometric work that's undertaken. And that's what's reflected in these slides. So the particular papers that are mentioned here, the first one by Sumal, to give some indication of the type of analysis that's undertaken and the type of data that are considered. This is a paper looking at mindfulness. So it's looking at a particularly topical issue within education. So it raises issue of self-awareness on the part of students, issues concerning focus, attention, anxiety and so on. And to analyse this and how it relates to student performance, this paper by Sumal and co-authors looks at around 3,000 different students that are surveyed across five different countries. The five different countries reflect the five different countries the authors are based in. And it looks at correlation and regression-based analysis. And it comes up with a conclusion that there is this link between mindfulness and student performance. And in the process of doing that, it produces another set of additional findings. So for example, it looks at exam anxiety being higher amongst female students relative to male students. And that's something that perhaps is, can be picked up upon later when we start to look at low and high stakes assessment and how that impacts upon student performance. I mentioned that IRE is somewhere where you might tend to find more econometric type analyses. But there are examples of similar forms of analysis undertaken in other journals. So there's a couple of papers mentioned here. There's another economics journal, Journal of Economic Education. The Studies in Higher Education is one of these broader, more education-based journals. And there's a paper cited that is quite heavy in terms of the econometrics that's undertaken. So these two papers, as Alvin mentioned, we've been looking for papers that are generalisable or have messages that can be transferred. And here, these two papers are looking at the application of flipping. So they're looking at how we can use flipping to support classroom activities. And they're taking different perspectives on this. So the paper by Kraft that's cited here looks at four years of data on student performance, undertakes regression-based analysis. So the sorts of things we're familiar with in economics appear here. Regression results are presented, clustered standard errors are used and so on. And it comes up with a conclusion that once we control the student characteristics, there's very little evidence of flipping having a beneficial effect beyond that that you'd have from active learning in any case. The second paper takes a different sort of stance. And it starts to question whether it's the type of flipping, the way in which flipping is implemented, that has an impact. So it reviews a very large number of studies. So the paper here has a fairly familiar feature, features compared to the sorts of papers we're used to in economics. So it has a very large literature review, undertakes quantitative analysis. We see OLS estimation, the use of probit-based analysis, quantile regression appear. And here it's looking at a collection of studies and it recognises that the benefits or advantages from undertaking flipping appear to be mixed within the literature. And it explores whether it's the approach to flipping that's undertaken that underlies this. So it goes for what's referred to as a non-didactic approach. It goes for a more open approach towards flipping. So rather than considering a more standard approach, where you might have videos that are consulted ahead of active learning within the classroom, it has a more experimental approach to the kind of pre-class materials. So it gives students something to reflect upon and consider. And it finds that by varying the approach taken to flipping, you do find benefits that come from the use of such an approach. And an interesting feature of these two papers is not only that they consider flipping, they both consider it in relation to micro econometrics modules. So there's a direct comparison that can be drawn. So the intention of this slide is essentially to say something about the types of data that are considered, the types of methods that are employed and the forms of analysis that are undertaken. And I think here with these three particular papers, we see that a familiar sort of approach is undertaken. We have large literature reviews, we have relatively large data sets, we have quite detailed methods that are employed. And the results that are produced within these papers are linked back into previous research with an attempted explanation provided. So that's the first slide in terms of the methodological issues or the use of methods within economics. On this next slide, we're moving on to something Alvin mentioned earlier and how gender appears within educational studies. So here we got three particular papers that are reported. I think it's probably worthwhile saying something again about the methods that are employed in these papers to support what is said on the previous slide. So again, relatively large data sets are considered here, quite familiar detailed methods of analysis are employed. So in the first paper by Arnold, we're looking at seven years of students, so seven different cohorts of students. More than 5,000 students are considered. So it's a large data set in terms of the nature of the analysis. We see multi-nomial logic analysis performed. And it's looking at whether there's under or over representation of genders within different subject areas. And the most prominent finding here relates to accounting and finance. So it's considering results from a business school. And we see an over-representation of male students or under-representation of female students within finance. The reverse is found to hold for accounting. In terms of what's found for economics, the most interesting finding is a variation across different subfields within economics. So we see macro tends to be more male, applied micro tends to be more female. The second paper here, the Montolio paper, again, looks at seven years of data. It uses a collection of methods to analyse this panel data set. Quantile regression appears. So again, quite large data sets, quite detailed forms of analysis are undertaken. And the focus of attention here is whether there's gender variations in terms of how student performance varies when faced with high and low-stake assessment. So essentially what we mean by high or low-stake assessment is how much they account for in terms of a particular module. So the analysis here is based upon a comparison of performance on coursework and examination, where coursework is the low-stakes element. It accounts for a smaller weighting of the overall module mark. The final exam is the higher stakes element. And the finding that arises here is that there is a clear difference between genders. And in particular, what is found is that as the stakes or the pressure associated with assessment increases, we see male students outperform female students. So for these higher stakes levels of assessment, there is a gender gap. The male students are outperforming the female students. But as the level of pressure or the stakes associated with assessment reduce, we see this reversed. So there's a clear message that's coming from here in terms of gender. There's a kind of cautionary note that is provided in terms of the use of high-stakes assessment impacting negatively upon female students. The final paper here, the one by Engelhardt, again, it's looking at a relatively large data set. The focus of attention here is how performance has varied as a result of the movement to remote delivery or remote instruction following Covid. So it looks at a relatively large sample pre-lockdown, so just over 2,000 students pre-pandemic, around 600 or so students, once we move to remote forms of delivery. It compares student performance on multiple choice tests. And the main finding here is that female students were found to achieve lower outcomes compared to male students of comparable back students were found to achieve lower outcomes compared to male students of comparable backgrounds and experience on introductory economics modules. But as we move to remote conditions, not only did this gap close, female students were found to outperform male students. So again, it's a fairly detailed analysis, fairly large data set. You're looking at over two thousand students that are considered here. It's a regression based form of analysis, weighted least squares, clustered standard errors are used. So the familiar sorts of approaches when economics are employed. And it comes up with this evidence of a gender gap pre-COVID, which closes post-COVID and COVID and a move to remote conditions. So those are three different studies looking at gender issues uh from the perspective of students. On the next slide, we move on to think about gender issues in relation to staff. So there's a a few papers that are mentioned here. The first one by Grimes and Mixon is in The American Economist, but it's looking at research that's produced in the Journal of Economic Education. So here, the authors are looking at fifty years of papers that have followed the appearance of the journal in nineteen sixty-nine. And it's looking at the collection of issues in relation to the authorship of these papers. So it looks at who are the leading authors, what are the most impactful or cited papers? It also looks at national affiliations. So the the majority of the papers published here have come from the US, but it also looks at gender issues. And it does it in a fairly disaggregated way. So it considers how the number of female or percentage of female authored papers has increased through time. And one prominent feature from this is that there has been a notable increase in the number of female authored papers. So we see this increase from approximately ten percent of the papers published in the nineteen seventies to around twenty-five percent in the decade starting twenty-ten. So although there has been a marked increase, it is still the case that the papers are male dominated. There's far more male authors than than female authors. What this paper also does is it, as I mentioned, has this disaggregated approach. So it looks at how female authorship varies across the different sections or areas of content within this journal. And for those aren't familiar perhaps with this journal, there there are five broad sections that are um covered within this journal. So there's a section on research in economics education. There's a section on instruction. There's a section that focuses on online issues. There's a features and information section. Then as a final section, we looks at research findings and how they might impact teaching. So that final section on economics content is the one that really stands out here. Because as mentioned, approximately a quarter of the papers papers that have been considered have female authors. That holds across the first four sections of the journal. But in this final section, the content journal, there's a there's a marked decrease. And thi- this is a section that perhaps is more closely linked to researchers, we might consider disciplinary research. It's thinking of research findings that might have a influence or impact on teaching. And that quite neatly leads into the the final section of this slide, where we're thinking about discipline-based research. So again, we're thinking now of the issue of um gender under or over representation within discipline-related research here. And the the two articles or items I mentioned here, there's the Royal Economic Society blog from a couple of years ago, and there's a paper by Lundberg and Sterns uh a little bit before that. In the R E S blog, what's considered here is the number of um female authors in the top five journals. So we think of American Economic Review, J P E, Q J E, uh Review of Economic Studies and Econometrica. And here, the nu- the numbers are lower than they were for education-based research. So we finished off looking at the Journal of Economic Education. And we had this kind of twenty-five percent figure for female authorship. When we look at top five journals, the numbers are markedly lower. So I think the most recent figure we got there in the Lundberg paper is a figure of about fourteen percent since two thousand and ten. Uh Hengel and Moon go on to consider this in a a little more detail. And there's some interesting findings that are produced because although there are fewer female authored papers, they tend to be more impactful. They tend to have higher citations. It's also the case that the inclusion of a female author appears to improve the quality of the work of male authors. So the citations associated with male authors increases following the inclusion of a female co-author. And how the issue then is how you interpret this. If there does seem to be a benefit from female authorship in terms of the quality of the papers, why are we seeing fewer papers? And the conclusion that comes from Hengel and Moon is perhaps it's that female authors are he- held to higher standards in the peer review process for these top five journals. So the previous slide was talking about gender issues in terms of students. Here we're looking at gender issues in terms of staffing. In both cases, when we look at discipline-related research, when we look at economics education, we see that it's male-dominated, although in terms of education, it seems that that male dominance isn't quite so marked as in the discipline-related research in the top five journals.
Thanks, Steve. And just to con- just to finish off with this section on gender and inclusion. Just wanted, uh Steve talked mainly there about papers which were in the economics domain, either in education or in the disciplinary area. Uh in the broader literature, you wouldn't be surprised that there's a lot of discussion about inclusivity also. Uh we didn't need to consider it as much because there's so much happening in the economics field. But I did just want to mention this one paper by uh in the in studies uh for of higher education, studies in higher education by Stentiford and Kutsouris uh from a couple of years ago, because um I think it it raises an interesting and important issue, which is that in the literature broadly specified, and here they're talking about the education literature, not specifically the economics one. But they say that there's a lack of nuance in the terminology uh being used around in inclusivity to understand these issues. And and many authors tend to conflate separate issues. Uh and and this is a a serious concern, I think, and especially as we start thinking about things like decolonization of the curriculum, which I'll mention in just a moment. But but you know, issues such as inclusivity according to disability, ethnicity, uh gender, as we've discussed already, but then also inclusivity with respect to the use of pedagogic methods like active learning and dialogic and collaborative pedagogies, which are inclusive because they are, they include students. Um or they include all the students. And so a- and so what they find, there's a there's a there's a survey here in this um in this paper. What they suggest is that the concept of inclusion needs to be much more nuanced and much more clearly defined. In other words, who is in need of inclusion? Uh and also, what are the exclusionary practices that need contesting? And conversely, what values therefore need promoting? Um and so so that's quite a nice paper to look at for just getting some more clarity on some of the definitions that we might want to use as we think through some of these issues as we go forward. What does the future hold? Well, it's clear to us at least that there's a lot of work still to be done on inclusion. There's a lot of work being done. But a lot more understanding that we need to gain in this area. Um there's there's a a a lot of work on gender at the moment with not seeing as much work on other areas beyond gender as some of the areas that I mentioned, disability, ethnicity, um and so on. Uh and we and we imagine there will be uh increased work and and there should be increased work on what the implications should be for the design of teaching, learning and assessment. For example, how does group work influence inclusivity? How does how do move moves towards the co-design of the curriculum and student partnership increase inclusivity and in what dimensions? Um how how does how does agency in the design of assessments include in increase inclusivity and again, in what dimensions? And then, of course, there's um more understanding we need to gain about staff diversity. And Steve talked a little bit about some of the papers which talked about gender. There's been um work recently uh uh from Warwick and other places as well about um similar work to the gender pieces about race and and staff diversity in ethnic in in dimensions of ethnicity, for example. Um but also, uh you know, what might be the in what might be the inclusive inclusivity implications of co-teaching, for example, and dialogic approaches uh when it comes to staff and bringing in uh other other people into one's teaching, either through multimedia means or through other means. And then finally, I just mentioned decolonization of the curriculum. It's something that uh over the two periods that we're talking about, the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, a lot happened in this era as as people will be aware of. Um the most uh prominent event was, of course, George Floyd. But the most prominent event here in Bristol, where I'm speaking to you from, was the felling of the Edward Colston um statue. Um but you know, as a as a result, it really propelled of universities across the board to think about what it means to decolonize the curriculum. And and I'll ju- I won't say much about this. Uh we are planning, the the network is planning to do a workshop on this in um in 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 uh Harriet Watt, I think, in the near in the very near future. But just to say that this is an area where, again, this sort of uh it it's often clouded by being included within general inclusivity, rather than thinking about the the specificities of what decolonization actually means. I won't say anything more about that now, but I'm going to, I think, pass over to Caroline.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So the next theme in the literature that I want to explore is around the use of technologies and resources in teaching. And what we've seen for many years now is that those of really large economics pedagogy literature that focuses on making suggestions for tools and resources that we can use in our teaching. And typically, this literature started with suggestions of um techniques, methods, tools we could use in our resource that use in our teaching, in particular teaching, individual teaching sessions. So and this literature has continued in the last two years. So we see a number of papers that give suggestions about use of media clips in teaching as a way of engaging and inspiring students. So there's just two papers that I've mentioned here, um both by Wootton and Etal. And the first one is quite novel because it suggests that K-pop or South Korean pop songs can be used to motivate discussions of a variety of introductory economics concepts. And that's quite different to um the literature usually, which so far today has focused much more on exploring particular films or film clips and TVs and TV show clips that can be used to illustrate economics concepts. So the paper by Wootton et al. twenty-twenty, it's actually a literature review paper that talks about a whole variety of ways in which we can try to better engage students in the classroom, including the online classroom. But it includes a really nice and up-to-date set of suggestions of films and film clips that can be used, TV clips, music examples, etc. And both of these papers are following on from this quite longstanding tradition now, which I think, although I'm sure somebody can correct me, I think it seems to have started with Leighton Hauser in two thousand and three. And this was seen as quite a seminal paper to that suggested different films and film examples and clips that can be used to motivate discussion in economics um classes. Sexton did something similar, but extended the analysis to go beyond film and to include TV examples. And then we have the paper here by Al Barani and Patel that talks about social media clips, for example, that can be used in um teaching. So this is this is just a selection of the many papers that suggest how we can use different types of media clips to motivate analyses of economics. So for example, there's whole papers that discuss how um we can use Seinfeld or The Simpsons, for example, to try and capture our students' attention. So yes, there's this ongoing literature on the use of media clips. There's also an ongoing literature on the use of games and experiments in economics teaching. And again, there is a substantial literature on this. And I've just suggested two papers here that have previously been published. But there are many papers that have been previously published that suggest games and experiments that can be played with students. And initially, I think it's fair to say that um these games and experiments tended to be physical games, and increasingly, we're seeing discussion of the use of online games. So the paper by um Dusak et al. from twenty-twenty-one. This is a nice example of a game to mention for two reasons. First of all, it's an online game. And students get to chair the Federal Reserve Bank. But another reason for mentioning it is that it's a macroeconomics game. Initially, a lot of the games that were introduced were applied micro and micro illustra- illustrative games. And this one's macro. And I also mentioned here this paper by Baker and Madden, which talks about um a classroom auction. And this is interesting for different reasons in that this is a game where students are expected to play the game over the course of a semester using their own money, which actually made me a little bit uncomfortable. Um and it raises some real ethical concerns. In fact, not much money and changed hands at all, but still the students were playing with their own money. And I think it's it's interesting and maybe can lead to debate. But essentially, what we see is these are just some examples of how the literature has developed. Of course, at the same time, we see lots of novel examples um and sort of novel suggestions that we don't need to spend time on in in this um session. But often they're covered in the Journal of Economic Teaching. So there's discussions about how we can use World War Two to illustrate production possibility frontiers. Um how we can use baking and ice cream to illustrate introductory microeconomics concepts. So what we've seen so far is that in the literature, there are, there's a huge literature on suggestions for what we can do in the class in different ways, whether it's using media clips, whether it's using games. What we're starting to see now in the literature is that there are papers that are going further and talking about how we should um design or giving suggestions for how we can design whole modules. So and this is a definite advance because it's not just thinking about individual sessions, it's thinking about whole modules. And typically, it's innovative modules. So the Diaz-Badell paper looks again at economics through film, but it's getting the students each week to analyze a full film and talk to use that as a tool to understand economics. We also have um papers that suggest how economics of altruism modules can be set up. And then we've got this paper that talks about how we can have capstone individual economics research modules. Essentially, this is talking about a mini dissertation module, but it may be interesting because definitely across the UK, we've got very different practices across universities and economics departments in terms of the extent to which we have dissertation modules. We also have papers that talk about how we should design full econometrics modules. So we see that the literature is developing from looking at suggestions for what we put in individual teaching sessions to how we design full modules. What we need to do now, and where there is still a gap in the literature, is we don't yet have literature that looks at how full programs should be designed. And this is something we want to highlight this afternoon as a possible area for future research. And it's particularly pertinent because it brings together a whole range of the themes that we're talking this afternoon. So we should be thinking more about how we design programs to reflect the diversity of the learners. And given the fact that we've all now got a lot more experience on using online teaching and assessment methods. And then I just mentioned this broader p- paper here by Van Molletal that talks about the extent to which international student mobility in different ways, such as study abroad, work abroad, can benefit students and should be incorporated into um programs. So So, yes, this is an area where we would suggest to people that there's still a gap in the literature. Okay.
Great, thanks Caroline. And then moving to the issues around the pandemic, we'll try and speed up so we don't run out of time. Denise, I can see you slightly concerned, this look on your face, so we'll try and speed up. So there are obviously a whole range of issues to do with COVID. And not all of them are discussed as COVID issues in the literature in 2020 and 2021, because as I've said before, it's a little bit early for people to have used that motivation and then got published. But there are a lot of interesting developments. So by the way, there was a survey which slightly fell outside our time from, it was from 2019 by Sam Allgood and Shower in 2019 in JEE, Journal of Economics Education, which noted that economics literature was talking a lot about cheating. So this is before COVID. There's a lot of work on cheating. And interestingly enough, it seems to fall off a bit in 2020 and 2021. May kind of rise to the surface again, but it seems to have dropped a little bit. But that's still, but it's still evident in the general literature on education. So these two papers just picked out from the general literature, partly because they're enormous data sets. So the Audrey one uses a large international dataset as a mixed method study and looks at the various influences on cheating. And it's based on survey evidence from students. So there is a bit of an issue there about asking people about how they cheated and whether they cheated. But nevertheless, the survey sample is quite big. And I think it was about 10,000 students or something like that. And what they found was that peer effects really matter and the culture of cheating really matters. So if you know friends who are cheating, you're more likely to cheat than if you don't. And so there's some, partly because there is a perception, and this is not a the same kind of quantitative study. It's based on perceptions and they talk to staff and they talk to students. And asking about what influences cheating and particularly looking at the design of different types of examinations and assessments. And what they found here was, at least in terms of perceptions, is that there is a perception that cheating is harder in exams and easier in coursework and in assignments. And what they found actually was that there was more cheating in, so the data they did have found that there was actually more evidence of cheating, they're finding more evidence of cheating in exams than, and again, it's based on people's observations and responses to whether they cheated or not. But nevertheless, finding more cheating in exams than in other kinds of assessments, partly because we are just better at detecting cheating in those other forms. You know, we have turn it in, we have methods of doing it. So that was slightly counterintuitive, but something that needs certainly more study. The Engelhardt paper is not specifically about assessment, but what it, we mentioned before, had found that women, Steve mentioned this, I think that women were doing better as a result of the changes over COVID. And so, and these were assessed using assessment, assessment marks, so not specifically to do with assessment. Let me move on to the other part of the pandemic, which is to do with the shift of teaching. So moving away from assessment and looking at the shift in teaching. So the study in economics letters by Allof. Again, there's an inclusivity angle here, which you'll notice, was looking at disadvantaged groups and found that there was no statistical evidence of concern in terms of learning for any of these disadvantaged groups that they were looking at. But the paper is called, it's not who you teach, but how you teach. And it's interesting for us as trainers in the economics network, because what it does reaffirm is that the way that you teach and the agency you give to students and the activity, the extent of active teaching, the methods of small group activities, think pair share activities, those kinds of things are the kinds of things which are significantly associated in their study with improved learning. And also that instructors that had experience of these kinds of methods were able to counteract any negative effects of the shift to online teaching. And so that was an interesting, interesting paper, again, suggesting that there wasn't, there's no discernible evidence in there or for significant worsening or for disadvantage. This does slightly contradict some earlier work by Chai and Guest, which looked at the use of recordings, lecture recordings, a long time ago, actually, it was in 2017. And there's a, there's a sort of other literature on this and how it might encourage toxic kind of behaviour like cramming, for example. So there is a sort of debate in the literature about this, but certainly the recent literature seems to not find too much disadvantage. And we've mentioned Engelhardt as well, that seems to support Allof in this. I'll skip over Tang just for now, so we don't fall behind. Just wanted to quickly mention, without going into any detail, three symposia that we talk about at some length in the in the paper that is almost written on this, that were published in the Journal of Economics Education. And the reason for mentioning these, and not that they were directly related, these symposia to COVID-related teaching and online teaching, but they talked about things which have a clear relevance to the sorts of changes that were taking place in teaching, learning and assessment during the COVID period. So the first of these symposia is on cognitive science and how, what we can learn from cognitive science, how mental states and other cognitive factors affect learning, for example. And when you're talking about a big shift in teaching, learning and assessment, there is an interesting question to be asked about how students respond to this and how they understand it, how is it received by them? So this, there's a, so this symposium talks about mindset and mental effort and working memory and the other sort of seven or eight things that have got listed there. And it looks, for example, specifically at things like, you know, what difference does it make if students are doing a course that they have to do, that's compulsory? How does it affect their mindset and their anxiety and therefore their learning outcomes on these courses? These aren't so much research papers as a kind of starting discussion, but it's a very interesting discussion, talks about the differences perhaps between these issues at the undergraduate and postgraduate level as well. Then there's a symposium on team-based learning and again, thinking about isolation effect during COVID. Potentially, our assessment is, we may well see a movement towards more group-based and team-based learning as we come back, partly to offset the these feelings of isolation during the COVID years. But just because people were experimenting with these kinds of forms of learning in the online world during the COVID period. So this, this symposium talks about sequencing, what we know about how best to sequence team-based learning, how you can use quizzes and assessments to engage students with this learning and how the timing of tasks can affect the learning. And then finally, there's a symposium on what are called outside readings. And these are just readings beyond the textbook. Now, this is quite a US-specific set of symposia. And I think certainly in the UK and perhaps in other countries too, the use of outside readings is quite common. And we don't tend as much as in the US, in, I think, to stick to a textbook. But what is interesting about this particular symposium is its focus on how you engage students with these outside readings, which is a problem that we have universally. And so use of low-stakes assessments or continuous assessment regimes, group work, and their effect on engaging students in reading some of this extra work. So that's the three, the three areas very quickly dealt with. I'm going to pass back to Caroline.
Okay, so still thinking about suggestions for future research in light of the literature that's emerging on teaching, learning and assessment in a pandemic. It's nice that we can see the links between the different themes that we've been discussing this afternoon. So Steve, early on in this session, was talking about the increasing amount of data that are available to us all. And this is going to help us in terms of future research. And also it goes back to Steve's point about the increasing amount of quantitative and econometric research that is ongoing in the economics pedagogy literature. So I wanted to highlight the paper by Summers et al. from Assessment and Evaluation in Higher Education, because this paper, the focus of the paper is in fact looking at students' engagement. In particular, it looks at first-year students. And it looks at their engagement with the variety of learning resources that are made available to them in their first term at university. And the big conclusion is that engagement with resources in the first three to four weeks of an undergraduate student's studies at university is linked to their first year performance. So that fits with what we've been talking about in terms of engaging students, particularly in the move to more online teaching. But what I really like about this paper is that in the literature review, there is a very big and really helpful discussion about the value and the increasing availability and use of learner analytics data. And for us as economists and econometricians, and for me personally, I've been described as a data junkie in the past. The data that's now available to us is fantastic when we're thinking about possibilities for pedagogy and projects, where we can actually start to think about measuring the impact of a variety of interventions. So, yes, we've got more learner analytics data. And that's going to possibly lead to more rapid monitoring of students at university, rightly or wrongly, a more rapid intervention. When we think there may be a problem, but crucially for all of us, it means that there's more data as well to undertake research. Then if I go on to the next slide, there's been an ongoing literature for many years, looking at the use of technologies in teaching. And that's been ongoing in the last two years. Even when these papers are not directly linked to the pandemic. So the paper by Johnson and Meda from 2020, this is a meta-analysis looking at the vast numbers of papers that have considered the impact of a range of technologies on learning. And it's worth pointing this paper out, because it goes back to what Alvin was saying just a couple of minutes ago, that it's not what we do necessarily, it's how we do it and how we teach. So Johnson and Meda conclude that there's no one subset of technologies that are guaranteed to benefit students and to enhance student learning. It's all about how we use particular technologies. So that's a very valid contribution to this longstanding literature on how we use technology in teaching. Steve's already mentioned the papers on flipping, so I don't need to talk about those. And again, I think probably because I know that myself and I've heard lots of colleagues grumble about students and maybe their inability to use spreadsheets very well. I just wanted to mention this paper by Bongas that talks about how we can use spreadsheets in our teaching and we can encourage students to use spreadsheets. But in this paper, it's particularly in the context of dynamic stochastic general equilibrium macro teaching. So I thought I'd mention it, because we often grumble about students and students. Okay, thank you, Alvin.
And I'll just finish then by just making an observation. I won't go through this slide. I just made the observation that we don't have a separate section on wellbeing in the paper that we're writing on this, but the but there's so much of the, so many of the papers that we've talked about, including the symposia, are kind of filtered through the lens of things like mindfulness, mindsets, anxiety. And so we're seeing an increasing theme of wellbeing, which is, which is spread across so much of the literature that we're reading. I'll finish there, Denise.
Thanks, Alvin. Over to you, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Alvin. So I'm going to talk a little bit about, as discussed, I'm going to look a little bit about almost what's missing from the, from the paper. And some of this is going to be about how choices have led to missing some areas of interest in literature. But also, I'm going to try and talk a little bit about what might be missing from the research generally, particularly following the pandemic. And I think there is an elephant in the room, and that is that the window that's been chosen for this, for this piece of research is a very tricky period to deal with, because in 2020, the first half of 2020, most of the education papers that were coming into journals were traditional education papers that had been worked on. And it's very much about thinking about how you develop your, your teaching or developing economics units or developing economics programmes. But it's very much a traditional focus. But through 2020 to 2021, the focus has changed somewhat. And COVID has hung heavy over quite a lot of the literature. It's not necessarily coming through as much as it could do yet. We're not necessarily seeing the full range of COVID papers in the literature, but that will certainly be coming as well. So, first of all, what, where is the scope for this review to be missing? Missing some interesting research? Well, I think the first, the starting point in terms of where there might be things missing is just the starting point in terms of the journals chosen. So the journals chosen is a reasonably rational set of journals to look at in terms of economics education. But as Alvin actually pointed out right at the beginning, there is a growth of publication, not just in the education research journals, but also within economics journals more generally. So one of the papers that I think is really important that is currently missing from the, from the survey is the Saatchi et al. paper, which is the sixth of a series of quincennial, I think I've said that right, quincennial surveys of instructors of principles of economics units within the US. And the key results of those surveys, and it's, I think the interesting thing is this survey took place in 2020, so more or less pre-COVID, was that the primary method of delivery of principles of economics units was lecture. The largest mode of teaching was through chalk and talk. There was evidence over time of a growth of active learning strategies within economics. So there's much, there's growth of discussions, but those were mostly instructor to student rather than necessarily student to student, but over time, there's a growth of student to student discussions. But to a certain extent, that's where a lot of the active learning ends within the Saatchi et al. survey. So I think this is something that's important to think about and to look if this should be included somewhere in the review. I do note that the American economist does appear within the, within the paper somewhere. So just focusing in on the three key economics education journals. Even within these journals, there is a question about whether all three should be included or whether you might focus in on two rather than all three, because the focus of the journals are different. Journal of Economic Education and the International Review of Economics Education are very much more about evaluation and discussing pedagogy, probably with a more more evaluative framework. But the Journal of Economic Teaching, I think Alvin did touch upon this, is more of a practice-based, it's closer in field to what you'd find in case studies rather than the evaluative papers that you might find in Journal of Economic Education and IRE. So there is a question whether or not this fits in with the, within the nature of the review or not. Now, the other thing is that I've called this review, Looking at the Pedagogy of Economics. I know it goes wider than that, but this is where the review is effectively looking. But pedagogy of economics has had a huge overlap in terms of research in higher education. There's a big overlap in research in higher education. Some areas of pedagogy and of economics will be specific to economics, but an awful lot of it will overlap with research in higher education. And obviously, there's a wide range of journals that you could be examining and searching within to find evidence of research in economics education. And some of the important papers, I think particularly with the growth of the And some, some of the important papers, I think particularly with the growth of the research in COVID, are going to be papers like the Internet and Higher Education and Computers in Higher Education, simply because these journals are very high, very impactful, very high ranking journals. But they're also going to be very useful in looking at things like the move online. The other area that there's a big overlap with is the economics of education. Pedagogy of economics is certainly a lot of the econometric research is using the same techniques as the economics of education. And we're increasingly seeing a set of papers which sometimes might have appeared in the pedagogy of economics literature, which are appearing in the economics of education literature. And these are ranged across a huge range of journals from the AER to Economics Letters to the Journal of the Economic, European Economics Association and more. So this, this slide I've just taken directly from the initial presentation and it is interesting that there is a growth of papers which are being published outside of the pedagogy journals. And it tends to be the first paper or a paper that has a really interesting identification strategy or a paper that uses a really strong experiment that gets published in the economics specific literature. But it is important that we, we begin to draw these out when we're discussing the literature more generally. Now, I did, I did preview that I was going to think about one of the trends in terms of education, which is the growth of the COVID paper. And there is a problem with some of the COVID literature in that trying to identify the impact of COVID is going to be very, very difficult. And this is going to be particularly true in individual higher education institutions. So a lot of the literature on on research in economics education is focused on either a single unit or a single course or a single institution. And COVID did produce a big shock to how, how people were being taught. There's a big move immediately from, from the Asatratel paper, lecture, lecturing in a lecture room to online delivery. And the Engelhardt et al. paper, one of their main findings is that the move online had little impact on overall performance. Now, yes, they've, they're using standardized testing within this, but the question is, is it the move online? Is that having no impact? Or is anything else changing within the, within the educational delivery? There's a big shock which has forced people to move online, but there's a question about whether or not the overall delivery is changing, whether or not there is more focus on supportive work, whether there's more teaching towards the test. What, in, in other institutions, it might be even that the assessment changes. So there's always these questions about whether or not some of the research within the COVID literature in particular is truly getting any exotonic shock or not. So one, one of the areas that may be happening. So I, I, I've got two papers here which may or may not be linked, but, but the the move online, if you find that there's no impact, one possibility is that there's no deleterious impact on education. The other is that if assessment has moved online, there might be more opportunities for cheating within the assessments. In terms of assessing the impact of COVID, there is a range of literature, some of which hasn't yet been published, but, but has less positive impact. So Keford has a really interesting paper looking at a randomized treatment where students were either moved to in-person or online classes. And the overall performance of students in the online version was to drop by point two standard deviations. Similarly, Kakal et al., this is a really nice paper, it uses experimental data looking at students who were randomly assigned to classes, which either had an opt-in online version or everything was in person. And the really interesting element here is that there's a heterogeneous effect, that low-attaining students had a negative impact of this and high-attaining students had a positive impact. Because it was a randomized controlled trial where either you could opt into studying online or not. You can also see who is choosing to study online or not. And in this particular study, there was little evidence of students opting out of in-person classes. Now, that, that may or may not be true post-COVID, but this is another bit of evidence that there may be deleterious effects of the move online from COVID. One of the themes that comes out within, within the paper is is inclusivity and particularly in terms of gender inclusivity. And again, there's a strand of literature that's coming forward that's just slipped outside of the, the window for the, for the assessment. Botan et al. have a really nice paper that's just come out in, in IRE in the last few weeks, which looks at female underrepresented, sorry, underrepresented minorities who are female perform worse in assessment than non-underrepresented minorities who are female. And the argument and the analysis in the paper suggests that this is actually stereotyping threat rather than that the students are performing worse. So it's, it, it's that there's some kind of discrimination going on. Now, one thing that I find really interesting that hasn't come out much within the review is there's very little discussion about how assessment can be, can be changed and can be, can be adjusted in order to take account of the fact that COVID forced people to move online. There is some work that's been going on about this. So the Economics Network has published a number of case studies, notably by Stefania Parede Fuentez, which looks at, which looks at how you can move assessment online, how you can successfully move that assessment online. But also thinking about how you can think about designing assessment that's going to avoid things like plagiarism. There's little discussion in the literature about how economics can move towards assessment, which is not just testing those traditional things, exams or tests such as remembering and understanding, but I'm thinking about how you go to those next stages. There, there is some research outside of economics again, which is really useful to draw in from Rahim, which is looking in the medical literature. Now, the other thing, there, there's a number of other things I think is interesting from the review. One of them is that research isn't necessarily rocket science in economics education. So the, the, the research in turn, the, the, the stream and the theme of research looking at papers outside of the literature, sorry, outside readings, which are using published papers as part of teaching, I think is, is interesting. In that this, this is something that is very much done as a norm within a lot of UK institutions, but it's all of assertion is that it, it's much more limited within the US undergraduate modules. So there's a lot that we in the UK can bring to, to the table on an international scale to say, well, this is how we can use our experience of using published papers within teaching in order to develop overall learning. Now, I, I, this is a new slide that I've just brought in whilst I was watching the presentation, but one, one of the things that Caroline, I think, was talking about was using the, the trend of the literature, looking at media clips in teaching. And there are a wide range of, of papers written about using, using pop culture, Seinfeld, Big Bang Theory, K-pop, Simpsons, Parks and Recreation. There's many, many more examples of this. And these are really useful in terms of practice, but something that always has to be considered when using these kinds of clips is, are there problems? Is there anything problematic about the media that you're choosing? So the Big Bang Theory, there, there's an entire website devoted to, to clips that you could use in teaching of economics called Bazingonomics. And there's papers within the literature discussing how you use this. And one of the considerations that you have to think about is, well, there is an awful lot of sexist language and problematic behaviour within, within, within programmes like the Big Bang Theory, particularly which you need to think about whether or not that's appropriate to be able to engage students with. So is there a consideration that you need to think about? Is this appropriate for the class? Is there something that might cause problems for students within your class by sharing that particular set of clips? I'll just jump over that. And the other element I'd just like to touch upon is there are difficulties in terms of getting good research in economics education rather than the economics of education. Whilst there is growing data available within economics education, the data is often based on smaller samples than you would generally see in the economics of education. The economics of education might be looking at samples across a range of schools, or it might be looking nationally at performance due to policy changes, or it might be looking at a certain local authority. And that, that usually allows for a much larger dataset than you, you might gain within some of the economics pedagogy literature. So because of this, and this ties in with some of what Steve Cook was pointing out, that a lot of the research needs to be mixed methods within economics education. There needs to be, that, that, the, the research is often not just the quantitative analysis, but also the discursive methods, the interview-based methods as well. So I'm going to stop there and I'll stop sharing. And thank you for a great paper.
That's great Steve. What a great discussion. Well done. I'd like to say well done to everyone. That was really interesting. We've got some good questions. I'm just going to put three of them off that have come up high and see how we go. I'm aware that we finish at 4:30, so the host is aware that I've shared that in case we didn't see it. So the first question is, Steve mentioned a little bit there about the bias of journals we've chosen. We've obviously chosen things all in the English language. And if you had any thoughts about how that might have affected what we found. The second is obviously COVID also gave an opportunity for people to engage each other worldwide as well. Is there any evidence that the sort of, that we're getting more co-authorship coming from across countries? In fact, I'd be interested to know whether we've got evidence of more co-authorship between universities to start with, but you know, sort of building on Steve's point around those studies tend to be on one country, one programme, one module and so on. And the third question, just that is there any evidence of the female students sort of avoiding the maths-heavy modules? Because this person that's writing the question is seeing fewer women in the classroom, which is a broader concern in economics anyway. And if you've been to, in some of the diversity sessions, you would have seen that. But if, is there any evidence around women choosing different options based on levels of maths? So those are the three top questions that I've got to share. And if we get enough time, hopefully you can make an answer for each very quickly before we finish.
I'll just come back on one of those and then pass to the others for the other ones. So the, the, the worldwide, I, I think it's a really interesting question you asked Denise about, or so whoever asked about worldwide co-authorship. And so we have got a spreadsheet which, which generated this paper. And it does have the, it does have the authorship. So it's something we yet to analyse more fully. But, but yeah, that's definitely, I mean, you know, we were conscious of talking about decolonisation and yet not really, not really thinking about journals and co-authorship in, across nations. But I, I, we were very conscious of the fact that the journals were published, the, most of the journals we were looking at were published in the UK or US. That seems to be a feature of a lot of publications and citations. But I don't know, and let me pass to Caroline, see if she's got any comments on this. And also Steve may want to say something about the gender, about the gender issue.
Yeah, thank you. So I think it's a very valid point that we are focusing on English language journals. But we did consider, I think we did only look at English language journals. And now I'm thinking, if anyone's got suggestions of economics pedagogy journals that aren't English language, please tell us, because I don't think I know of any. But there are definitely other pedagogy journals that are published internationally beyond the UK and the US. And Alvin knows, Alvin and I had a conversation where we deliberately ruled out a journal because we didn't think it was sufficiently high quality. And I'm not going to say what the journal was called, but I do know what it was called. And also, that also links to points, Steve, that you made as discussants, that maybe we shouldn't have included the Journal of Economic Teaching in the journals that we surveyed. And I think what comes out, we mentioned papers in the presentation this afternoon, but I think what comes out in the much more detailed paper is that actually because you're, you're absolutely right, those papers in the Journal of Economic Teaching, they aren't as detailed and they don't have as much evaluation. And they're more focusing on innovations without the, the, the depth of pedagogical research supporting them. We don't focus on those papers as much. So there are quite a few papers in that journal where we thought, that's interesting, that's novel. And the, the papers didn't make it to the final critical survey. So I'd say that, the other question that I can address is this idea of whether COVID led to greater collaboration. We've not seen that emerging in the literature to date, but it goes back to the point that a number of, of, of has made, which is that because the survey relates to 2020 and 2021, COVID was just starting to have a hit on us. And so it's likely that if we repeat this in two years' time, then we'll see a lot more papers and we'll be able to review a lot more papers that look explicitly at the COVID period. And so we can then sort of look for greater evidence of international collaboration that doesn't require people to be in the same country, the same room, etc. So thank you for the suggestion. We'll make sure that we, we look out for that.
You were on mute Denise. I think you were saying Steve, do you have anything to add?
One minute.
Yeah. So just picking up on the issue of maths and gender. I think actually one of the papers that we consider in the paper, the paper by Arnold does look at this. And there's sometimes a mention of practice, mathematical ability that underlies the underrepresentation. And, and that is rejected in the paper. And it actually talks about mathematical and verbal aptitude. And perhaps it's, it's, you know, it's strengths with verbal skills that lead to different options being chosen.
That's great. Thank you. I'm going to call the debate to an end. I will just float this question that you can take away with you. It just came in as we were talking. Whether the quality assurance program processes to check value and is there an argument for quality assurance processes to check the value added and other legal cultural issues? I'll just put it there in terms of statements so that at least I can acknowledge it came in as we were talking. I'd like to say thank you so much for today. I'm hoping, audience, that that was interesting. Please do make use of the feedback to let us know. We hope to do this again in two years' time and, and it would be lovely to know whether this has been a useful session for you. And we look forward to hearing your feedback by email or by messages on this, on the service for the RIS conference. Enjoy the last session of the day and thank you for being with us. So thank you, host. We're done today.
Thank you Denise. Thank you everyone. Thanks for the questions.
Yes, thanks for the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.